So this is the regular Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. or shortly thereafter, 10:24, something like that. Board of Supervisors hearing room, 1415 Melody Lane Building, G. Bisbe, Arizona, 85602. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. Thank you. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at this meeting. The Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A and III. We'll begin with roll call supervisor, District One.
Crosby is still here.
District Two.
Supervisor English is present.
And District Three Supervisor Judd. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 526443916 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during this discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And I do have a few people here to speak on Call to the Public. And I will now begin Call to the Public. Alfred Kern is our first speaker. Please, as everyone approaches or begins to speak online, say your name and your address.
Okay, well, everybody knows me. My name is Alfred Kern. I live 3460 East Greenwash in Douglas, Arizona. I've been coming to meetings coming February two years. Nothing's been done. Has anybody other than Tom, he made a trip out there one time or twice, but we need to get that rope addressed. I don't know what the problem is. Figure out what the problem is and deal with it or whatever you got to do. But like I said, I've been coming this February would be two years and nothing's been done. So I'm not going to waste a lot of time. And like I said, I've been talking to Ann English since she's been in office over 11 years and nothing got done. 11 years. Do you think people could do something by accident in 11 years? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Morse and she is on teams.
Can you hear me?
Allison Morse, do you hear me? Because we don't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
In case that you do hear me and there's technical problems, I'm going to call for the next speaker and then I'll come back to you, okay? So the next speaker is Jeff Sturgis. He is also on teams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Is he hearing us out in the Netherlands?
I can hear you. I could hear Allison.
No, I just, he was signed up to be on teams. I understand that the people that are on teams can hear people on teams and they can hear us, but we're not hearing the people. So we're going to sit tight. We're going to take a little IT. I'm going to go back to Allison as the next speaker for when we get this resolved.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we're going to take a five minute break. So everybody stretch and go to the bathroom or whatever you need to do. Thank you. Adjourn for a moment. Take a break for a moment. He has to call.
Chair.
Are they good?
No, not yet. So that's been five minutes. May we extend the recess for another 10 minutes just to give them more time?
Um, yes, and I don't think I have anyone else to speak. I do have an in-person speaker. Should we take that or should we just extend the recess? Let's wait. Okay, we're going to extend the recess until we have our technical difficulties resolved. Okay, thanks for your patience, especially people online, because you can't even see how busy we were here. And thank you to our IT department. I'm going to begin the meeting again officially and we are in Call to the Public and our next speaker is Allison Morse. You have three minutes and please say your name and your address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear me? Great, thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Allison Morse. I'm from Portal and I thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'd also like to express my thanks to the Elections Department for executing the successful mail-in ballot election for Benson and Wilcox and for the attention to detail I know went into that process. Mail-in ballots are lawful, safe, and reliable. Arizona has a proud history of using this voting method for over years. This is the trusted way 50% of citizens vote in Arizona. Thanks to Elections Director Tim Maddox, his Elections Manager Dawn, and Assistant Amy. We know that you are doing your best to ensure free, fair, and secure elections in Cochise County. This is the foundation of American democracy and our most fundamental constitutional right. Yesterday's grand jury proceeding is a reminder that not all of our county officials are interested in obeying the law, nor do they seem to care about validating the votes of their constituents according to statute. They have demonstrated their willingness to discredit the will of the voters in order to push the political agenda, but they are finally being held accountable for their actions. They knowingly and willfully ignored the law, then despite their empty promises of incurring no costs to taxpayers, forced us to foot the bill for their ill-advised pursuit. Supervisor Crosby's attempt to raise additional funds from the public is unconscionable. His intent, Democrats, to disrupt our election and refuse to certify its results have already cost taxpayers well over half a million dollars. Yet he has the unmitigated gall to ask for more. Most of us are appalled by the unlawful and unethical behavior of these two supervisors who strayed off course in pursuit of crazy notions based on conspiracy theories and falsehoods. It's now up to the Attorney General to decide how to hold these two accountable for their misdeeds. The arc of the moral universe is long, I've observed, but it doesn't bend towards justice. This I am sure of. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Sturgis. He is also on teams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. A recent commentary in the Herald Review, "The Cult of Crosby ends with warning folks that the arrogance, even if believed sincerely, never ends well, and that the stark period in Cochise County will only be remembered for its passionate idiocy." The commentary was written before we learned that both Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd are subjects of a criminal investigation. Let's focus on the Herald Review's term "passionate idiocy." To whom can this refer? Well, it surely could be targeting those who have supported and defended Tom Crosby, Peggy Judd, and David Stevens as they defied the warnings of our county attorney, county insurance representative, and Secretary of State not to break the law. They have demonstrated their indifference to the rule of law and contempt for those who enforce laws. These are folks who have written letters to the editor in support of Crosby, Judd, and Stevens and their illegal actions. And these are folks who have come to the Board of Supervisors meetings repeatedly to speak or otherwise offer their support to these three who have pressed forward with their illegal actions, going so far as to sue their own employee, Election Director Lisa Mara, for not being willing to break the law. Perhaps the passionate idiocy term could also apply to those who replied to Peggy Judd after she said, "Maybe I'll go to jail," with yelling, "We'll go with you." Perhaps that passionate idiocy had led a couple of speakers during a recent call to the public to spread a lie about me in slanderous attempts to silence my speaking up against the illegal actions of Crosby, Judd, and Stevens. I, like many other citizens of Cochise County, have repeatedly reminded those supporting Crosby and Judd and Stevens that they have been urging them to do what is not legal. They have refused to listen to sound advice. The actions such as holding a full handful of votes and refusing to certify election results are not within the legal powers of the Board of Supervisors. If citizens want to change state laws, they need to take this up with the state legislature. This seems so obvious to so many of us that we have been astounded by those who do not under that simple matter of truth. Let's end this era of passionate idiocy, supporting politicians who impose their will on the rest of us despite the law. Please end support for Crosby, Judd, and Stevens who flout the one thing that truly makes this country great, and that is the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia Jaredette is our next speaker. She's also on teams.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Tricia Jaredette in Sierra Vista. I do want to say that my experiences over 28 years here in Cochise County, in which I believe I have voted by mail in almost every election, if not every election, I have felt confident in participating in that process and in having my vote counted. There are checks in place to make sure that the machines are certified appropriately. The machines are approved with hand counts ahead and after the election to make sure that the tabulators worked correctly. There's no evidence presented in any court that I'm aware of that our machines and machine counts have been incorrect. And so I hope that we can get past all of this dissension about the accuracy, because we have three elections coming up in 2024 that will make use of those machines. And so I hope people will become better educated about how the process works and how reliable it is. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, no, Sandy Trowel is still here and I'm going to thank you for coming and speaking in person. And now I will turn your paper over and now, and that will be the end.
Hello, Sandy Trowel from Sierra Vista. I want to talk about elections. The Arizona Constitution, Article Two, Section Two, Political Power, Purpose of Government. All political power is inherent in the people and governments derive their powers from the consent of the governed and are established to protect and maintain individual rights. We want secure elections. Nothing else matters except securing our elections. We have no country without secure legal elections. The Board needs to reestablish the 55 precincts, remove voting technology as third-party corporations are unconstitutional. We do not consent to mass mail-in voting with no chain of custody and no voter ID. The electoral process should be transparent and accountable to the people as per our constitutional rights. And I have a quote, "If you stay silent about the problem to keep the peace, there is a 0% chance that the problem gets fixed." Thank you.
All right, that concludes our Call to the Public.
I would like to respond to some disparaging remarks. With Ms. Morse, I would comment that election integrity issues are not going to go away heading into a presidential election year. For Mr. Sturgis, I would point out that the Secretary of State approved 16602B, which is what Madam Judd and I approved of on October 24th, the next day, October 24th, our correction. She sent us that letter approving 16602B on October 25th. So there's an apparent contradiction between what the county attorney said and what the Secretary of State said, even though the county attorney claimed that the Secretary of State agreed with him on October 24th. That was not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on with our consent agenda, items one through five.
Chair, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items One through Five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries. Action item number six. We have a motion and then Ms. Gilman, our Deputy County Administrator, will explain it.
Chair, I move we approve the sales of the September 11th, '22, 2023 tax deed land auction held online through public surplus of parcels listed on Exhibits A to B and authorize the clerk of the board to post the remaining unsold properties for sale on an over-the-counter basis. And there's a reference to Exhibit C.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Gilman.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Judd. From September 11th through the 22nd, 2023, there was an online tax deed land auction resulting in property sales of $307,994. All sold parcel information is on the attached exhibits and all funds were collected through our vendor, public surplus. Those funds will be apportioned by the Treasurer's Office according to state statute. A listing of the parcels sold was also provided to the county treasurer to update the county tax rule. Only a few of those parcels remain unsold from that original list and that's on Exhibit C. You'll recall at a work session that we held on October 24th, the Board directed staff to remove parcels related to Miracle Valley Bible College from any future over-the-counter tax sale until plans for abatement or remediation of hazardous materials could be discussed. Therefore, we are asking for the remaining parcels that were unsold, that's in Exhibit C, minus the Miracle Valley parcels, be approved so that the clerk of the board can handle an over-the-counter sale in January.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Gilman.
Right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number seven.
Chair, I move that we approve the Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment Three between Cochise County and the City of Sierra Vista, authorizing both entities to administer programs and to receive and disburse funds for the Upper San Pedro Partnership for successive five-year periods with automatic renewal until terminated, effective upon signing by both parties.
Okay, I have a second. Sorry.
That's all.
Thank you. I have two speakers for this one. Sharon Gilman, Deputy County Administrator, and Mark Appel, Environmental Project Coordinator. So I'll start.
Okay. And if there's any questions that I can't answer, then Mark Appel is here.
Okay.
So this IGA, the County and the City of Sierra Vista, entered into it back on February 23rd, 2010. Since that time, there have been extensions of the IGA in five-year increments. The purpose is that the IGA serves as the umbrella agreement for the Upper San Pedro Partnership, covering the Waterwise Program, administration of all non-flood control-related projects, programs, and all in support of the Upper San Pedro River and that partnership. Each party, being the city and the county, currently provides $10,000 a year to the Upper San Pedro Partnership. And this IGA would extend that original IGA from 2010 in another five-year increment and continue on until both parties or until either party terminates it.
Are there any questions?
It's been working, so let's keep it in.
Yeah, I think this is a good way that we serve our constituents, not only keeping the cities, the city and the military base and people in this community, Upper San Pedro community, I say this, but the Upper San Pedro community confident that there's something being done to conserve water. It keeps the river healthy. People that live all along the river in our county and beyond appreciate the efforts that we make and I believe this has been working like Ms. Eklis said. So thank you so much and I don't hear any other comments or discussion. So I call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries. Item number eight. It's.
Chair, I move that we approve the Third Amendment to the Agreement for Employment of County Administrator Richard G. Karwatska to increase the annual compensation by $10,000 for a total gross annual salary of $175,000 per year, effective as of the pay period immediately following the execution of the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I am going to just speak about this for a moment. We do an annual evaluation of Mr. Karwatska and he has, I know anyone that associates with him for a minute knows that he has the bright personality for this job, but he is a very effective leader and I don't think he expected the kind of work he did, but we've looked at market-based salaries for everyone else's position and he still falls way below what someone doing his job would get. And he graciously, because I think we might have offered him more, but he graciously accepted $10,000 extra and we just appreciate him and what he does for the county and he should have a big plaque along with that, in my opinion. So anyway, that's the description I have. Anybody else have anything to say?
I just want to sort of echo. I think that he's doing a tremendous job as our county administrator and one of the ways that employees, not only the county administrator, but other employees, realize that we appreciate them is sometimes through a change in salary. And so it's appropriate for us to make that statement so that our employees know that we do appreciate the work that Mr. Karwatska is doing for us.
Thank you. Any more comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye and the motion carries. Item number nine, or item number eight. Wait, I didn't know where we are. Item number nine.
Chair, I move we approve retitling and sale transaction of the Casa Loma Triangle Apartments located at 204 West Allen Street, Tombstone, Arizona, 856382 Desert Sage Apartments LLC, as described by InterPacific Advantage Asset Management LLC in the attached correspondence.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is going to be described by Sharon Gilman, our Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning again. So this is a bit of a story, so bear with me. I'll try to keep it brief. We received a letter from the Industrial Development Authority of Cochise back in late October and it describes that there is a sale of a property called Casa Loma Triangle Apartments in Tombstone. The Industrial Development Authority is dissolved and so therefore, according to statute, any business related to it is a vested interest of the county. So we become the responsible party in this matter as the Cochise County and I bring it before the Board because the asset management company needs the permission of the Board to sell this property. The Industrial Development Authority being a limited partner, they're listed on the title paperwork and so the Board needs to get that permission. We are expecting the sale to go through sometime in December and the proceeds to the county would be about $90,000.
Okay, any questions?
Do we need to approve who gets to, who will sign the paperwork? Because obviously if we approve it, there needs to be a signature.
Yes, that's part of the motion of the retitling, but then this Chairman Judd can sign the paperwork.
I have no other question.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, County Sheriff.
Chair, I move that we approve an Intergovernmental Agreement between Cochise County Sheriff's Office and Cochise County Community College District for shared expenses of acquiring the ownership of and maintenance of three Full Motion Police Car Simulators and one Air Medic SIM simulator, with the county portion being a one-time payment of $125,000, effective from date of signing by all parties through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Could I ask a question before you start? In reading the information, it didn't appear that we had to pay for maintenance.
That would be correct.
And so in the motion, it says that shared expenses of acquiring ownership and maintenance. So is that, is that okay to have that in there knowing that we're not going to be responsible for maintenance?
We, we were told that we're not going to have any maintenance costs.
Supervisor English, if I can address that, because I worked on the agreement also. Yeah, the agreement lays out in detail who's responsible for maintenance, but it covers maintenance operations and so forth. So that's why it's titled that way, the shared expense.
Well, I saw in the agreement and I read the agreement and we weren't responsible for maintenance.
Right, but the agreement covers all of those aspects of it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so basically we're recognizing that someone else is handling the maintenance because we're approving the agreement.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so our speaker on this subject is Tom Malinin and he will, he will tell us what we have to know.
Well, Chairman Judd, Supervisors English and Mr. Crosby there. Cochise College for a long time has been a pretty good public safety partner here in Cochise. Back in the 70s, I remember going to Cochise College, taking law enforcement classes, et cetera, et cetera. As time has progressed, we know we have a local law enforcement academy for training new officers and that's become very, very popular. They've come out this year with a driving track, which was needed tremendously by law enforcement and public safety in general, because we're always looking for a driving track when we have students out there as part of the curriculum under the Law Enforcement Academy by post, Arizona Peace Officers and Standards and Training. They, at their, a fight over Health Community Real there, they ended up building a fire EMS simulated vehicle. It's really, it's an ambulance that can move up and down, sideways, et cetera. And you go in and you climb in it like you're climbing into a regular ambulance. You have your whole driver compartment there and you have your simulation screens in front of you and you go down the roadway and you have your obstacles and whatever else you have to miss on that. As you're driving the vehicle, it has action going on with whoever's in the box of the unit. Sheriff's in the box, I'm driving the vehicle. I really liked the simulation on it and I'm obviously driving too fast. And I'm obviously driving too fast. So it can rock pretty good and it's a good driving simulator. The state, over the years, has had a state simulator that comes in a big trailer. The only problem with their driving simulator is you get vertigo in it. And I lasted five minutes and I was done. This agreement would allow us to build three full-motion police cars that we can do driver simulations in there. Basically, we could do pursuits. We'd have three units, three individual officers in these vehicles. And these officers can communicate with each other and develop their plans, how they're going to continue with the pursuit, where they're going to end it, how they're going to end it. The simulation software I really like a lot. They're right now going out throughout Cochise County in basically however they map the roads. But when we get in the simulators, it's going to be Cochise County. It's not going to be Phoenix. It's not going to be some other unknown town. So they could do a simulation and sit there and say, okay, guys, we're going down to Douglas today. Do a simulation of the town of Douglas in a pursuit or whatever other driving we need to do. It's going to be a good training tool for the academy. And it's also going to be a good training tool for refreshment for our officers for part of their driver training. Our commitment to Cochise College is $125,000. We do have that funding and it's not a problem for us. We could go ahead and pay for that. And we're going to provide, Fleet is going to provide three damaged vehicles that are not roadworthy anymore. And they're, take these three wrecked vehicles. They'll take them to Canada, refurbish them and build them like the ambulance simulator. So it's going to be interesting. It's a good tool.
Only $125,000.
That's all.
Yes, yeah.
And three wrecked vehicles.
Does that come from the sheriff's budget or the general fund?
It comes from, this is coming out of getting money. Supervisor Crosby, we get about $250,000 a year that we've been using.
I'm pretty familiar with it.
Okay, you know what we use it for.
What is an Air Medic SIM?
I'm making this, the Air Medic SIM is my understanding. It's actually the equipment underneath the vehicles that makes it rotate, et cetera. And that is basically controlled by the instructor from wherever he's at so that when you're driving down the road, it's doing.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with a helicopter or aviation simulation?
They're, that, they're going to bring a helicopter in, but that's going to be down the road somewhere that they're going to bring one of those in. They've got three rooms over there. The first room, and I call them green rooms, is the ambulance. They got a second green room that they're setting up for that helicopter at sometime later. And then the third room is the room that we're having our investment in on the vehicles.
So this, this term Air Medic SIM that is, that is part of this item has to do with a helicopter?
I would say so.
Okay. Then I'll just have a few more comments on it, which is wait is the enemy of flight. Maintenance personnel for the helicopter, where are they going to be? Do you have any idea? Are they going to be in, where are the maintenance personnel for a helicopter going to be?
I do not know.
Okay, I don't know either. So whoever they are and wherever they are, they're not going to want to swap accessories. So the temptation is to treat it like a flying truck and overload it. And you're going to have a situation where power required exceeds power available from the motor and transmission. So I would caution you, if you get into the, you want to be a helicopter ambulance someday, don't make it so heavy that you can't take the stuff off and you're going to end up putting too much stuff on it.
You're the helicopter expert.
I was.
Well, okay.
Hey, for in a simulator though, because they're in a room. They're in a green room on the ground.
Well, yeah, they're going to be in a green room. I guess, you know, separate us from fire.
All right, well, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number 11, we can have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we certify the total court revenues collected in fiscal year 2022, 2023 exceeded the total court revenues collected in fiscal year 1997, 1998, and authorized distribution of the 5% set-aside revenues pursuant to ARS 41-2421.
And Rita Shipley, our Budget and Finance Director for the courts, will explain that.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisor.
Was there a second?
Oh, was there a second? Okay, sorry. Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors, English and Crosby. Court Administration is requesting that the Board certify that the total court revenues collected in fiscal year 2022-2023 exceeded total court revenues collected in fiscal year 1997-1998, and authorized distribution of the 5% set-aside revenues pursuant to ARS 41-2421. So total court revenues for fiscal year 2223 were $5,977,849.20 compared to the baseline year of fiscal year 9798, total of $2,100,024, which is an increase of $3,877,825.20. The total amount of the 5% set-aside for fiscal year '23 was $298,892.46, which based upon the Board's action will be distributed as follows per statute. 57.37% goes to the court, 21.61% goes to the county attorney, 20.53% goes to the indigent defense and 0.49% goes to the state. This distribution is to supplement funding for the processing of criminal cases. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board has at this time.
I have no questions.
Pretty straightforward.
Thank you. So we have a motion in section second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. The information technology item, item number 12.
Madam Chair, I move we approve grant amendment for Arizona 911 program, Grant Amendment ADOA-AZ91124-01 with the Arizona Department of Administration to fund public safety answering point services for a total of $770,397 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Joe Casey, our Associate County Administrator.
So this, this grant amendment is to increase the amount from $554,902 to $770,397. The cost for this is for managing and maintaining the 911 system at CCOM, paying for the phone lines, so on and so forth. We've got updated bills from AT&amp;T and that's why there's such a big difference between what was initially granted a few months ago versus this increase here.
Is there any questions?
What does AT&amp;T say the reason for the increases?
They didn't have a specific reason. It was the five-year contract and it was miscommunication between what was year one versus the five years. The overall contract amount is still 1.5 million, plus or minus a little bit, but 1.5 million. But it was just more year one versus the five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. So hearing no more comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. The next point on our program is Richard Karwatska, County Administrator.
Just want a brief announcement that for the next board meeting, we have Thanksgiving and that most county buildings will be closed on the 23rd and 24th of November. And as the sheriff often likes to remind me, his building is not closed on the 23rd and the 24th. So they'll be doing their job. Also regarding the transfer stations, which is important for the public to know, on the 23rd, the Thursday of Thanksgiving, the transfer stations will be closed, but Friday they'll be opening it. So that.
And Saturday?
And Saturday.
Thank you. All right, Supervisor Crosby.
Thank you.
Supervisor English.
I just want to say that there were a lot of veterans events around the county on Veterans Day. Cochise County has a healthy respect for veterans and a lot of parades and memorials, all those things. So I didn't get to attend in other communities except Douglas, but they come all out. So it is, is it another time of the year when they want to show that they have pride in our country and our veterans? So I just wanted to give a shout out to the people that put on the programs in Douglas.
Thank you. I also am going to pass. I don't have any report for District Three. So our next meeting is today at 1:00 PM in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room. And it's for a work session on the Public Works Department. And it will be an informational update